Right, we'll call to order this special work-study meeting of the school district of Independent School District 624. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Chapman?
Here.
Fahey here. Kimball?
Here.
Mullen?
Here.
Newberg?
Here.
Newmaster?
Here.
And Wilson?
Here.
All right, tonight, we have the honor of a presentation from our superintendent, search advisor, Mr. Ken LaCroy. He's going to walk us through the process that we will be following next week when we interview our first round of candidates. So, Mr. LaCroy, let me turn it over to you. Welcome.
Thank you, Janet. Just a couple of words preliminary. Two things I want to cover tonight. I want to talk about the questions and see if there's anything, concepts, that you would like to add before we go to the actual interviews on February 22nd and 23rd. Those will be the two nights we're going to use. We have, we're going to recommend at our next meeting, five persons to be brought for first-round interviews. And I can tell you that I'm feeling very good about the pool that came out of the process, and we'll talk again more about that at the next meeting. But we have some, a very good pool. I also want to talk a little bit about the interview process itself, and what I expect from you, what you can expect from me. So we all know when we go into that interview, that first round of interviews, what's going to happen, where it's going to take place, how much time we're going to spend, and the schedule. And Friday of this week, you'll receive from Linda a little book. And then that booklet will be the schedule of interviews, the time, the place, who's going to be interviewed at what time, and each one of the candidates, all application materials will be in color-coded so that you can keep everything in one book and you don't have paper scattered all over the place. And you can write in there, you can make comments in there. There is a couple of, there's an evaluation form in the booklet that you can kind of mentally go through and take a look at and give your responses for your usage. And at the very back of the book, we finish in the second night, there'll be three candidates the first night, the 22nd, starting at four o'clock, and you'll get this all in writing. But I'm just trying to get it, you know, into the thinking process. We start at four o'clock, and the first candidate will report until 5:15. We'll take a short break, and then we're going to have something to eat at that time, from 5:15 to 5:45. At 5:45 or thereabouts, and we'll go over some and under sometimes, so I'm not worried about time, since they're all there, everybody's here, and if we take an extra five minutes for a break or something, that's not an issue. At 5:45, the second person will come in, be interviewed, and that'll take place until 7:00 PM. And then at 7:00, we'll have the third one. Then we leave. We don't talk about anything. We haven't seen all the candidates. We come back the next night at four o'clock at South Campus and South.
Yeah, both nights are in the Mariner Theater at South Campus.
They're in the theater.
In the theater, yes.
Okay.
And we'll be in a kind of a horseshoe, so you can see each other. The candidate be in the middle, and the audience be able to see most of us, at least from the side. We'll have two, the second night. We'll start at four, 5:15, take a break, back at 5:45, and then when we finish the next interview, then I'm going to have you go through the exercise, and there'll be no discussion yet at all. I want to find out where you are, so I have a little form that you're going to fill out. We'll take a break, I'll come back and say, here's what it looks like, here's what you're thinking. Now, we're not, we haven't talked any names at this point. We're just talking about, you know, the candidates. And what I don't want is anybody to start too early about talking about candidates, because you get yourself in concrete, and then it's hard to change after a while. So, we're working for consensus. We're working for unanimous vote. I'd say that, unanimous vote, when you get all done after the discussion, and somebody may have to give up for the good of the cause, but we want, because no one wants to take this job on a four-three vote. I wouldn't. You want support unless there's something terribly wrong, but by that time, we're going to be very honest with each other, and we're not going to hire somebody if there's something terribly wrong. We're going to know a lot more before that second interview. Once the names get out after the next board meet, if it's board meeting tonight, you can be sure that the unions, fellow employees, members of the cabinet, principals, all kinds of folks will be making phone calls. And the union's going to call the union president in leftover shoe, no question about it. They're going to see how those, so there are going to be lots, and they know that, the candidates know that that's going to happen. They're fair game once the names are public. I've talked to all five of them very thoroughly and said, I'm going to recommend your names, the committee is going to recommend your names on Monday night at a board meeting. Are you in? Because you know you're going to be in the newspapers and all over the community and the metropolitan area pretty soon. And they said, we're in, every one of them, and happy to be so. Okay? So they know that they're fair game after that. And if any of you get some information, and that's certainly possible, you're in the MSBA Board of Directors, you have all kinds of connections, you have board chairs, and you belong to C, and you belong to, what, 916? So you have lots of contacts. If there's something that comes up, I don't think there will be, but I have seen it happen, and you get a, some kind of remark or comment or something that should be looked at, call me, and I'll look into it, because I have enough connections to find out. And by the way, and all five of these persons, I have personally met with four, fifth just didn't work out, but I had three phone conversations with that person, and I had two conversations with all the rest of them. And then I've talked to about 10 persons who know these persons, colleagues, neighbors, subordinates, superiors, about them. And what I'm looking for is the skeleton in the closet, the thing that's not on paper, or what's on paper isn't reality, that's what I'm looking for. And I have found all good things. I know you've made at least one phone call. I talked to someone who knows Kim today, as a matter of fact, about a candidate, person said to say hello to Kim. So, we got lots of information. And I could tell you that Linda and I, and Janet, we went through this process of looking at paper, and based upon a phone call that Linda made, and all of us were kind of fooled. I mean, I have to say that, all of us. And we corrected it, bam, like that. And it was good that she was able to get that information, and thankful to the persons who responded. So, we changed our minds. And it's so important, we can't do a, you can't do a legal background until you actually offer a position, you can't just go out there and criminally do any legal backgrounds. And I can't do a legal background anyhow, that has to be done through HR, through the district. But, we can talk to people, and people are, on the phone especially, or face-to-face, are pretty candid about being, you know, honest and straightforward. So, all of that has taken place. So, if you do hear something, or something does come up, please call me. Or if you want to call me, call Janet, and she'll call me, because I do like to check it. Occasionally, you'll find, not to be in the negative side, you know, for just a moment, occasionally you'll find somebody who wants to do harm to somebody else. And occasionally, you'll find that. And sometimes, things are said, or things are written or sent about a candidate, and over the years, it's happened a number of times. And then sometimes, it's not true, sometimes it's vindictive, and sometimes it is true, or partially true. So, if that should happen, just let me know. And in fairness to the district, and to the board, and to the candidate, we need to look into it. And we'll do that. All right. Now, on the plus side, the questions, and you did a nice job on questions, everybody responded. Jody, where's Jody? She's not here. Oh, she's back there. She said, I'm really proud of this board. Tell me why. She said, they've been here hours, hours, reading papers, looking over things, checking on things, they really have been working hard at this thing. Because, as I told Don, it's, this is not how normally it goes. Frequently, the consultant, or in my case, the subcommittee, the board, we go through the applications and make a recommendation to the full board. This case, every one of you went there because we tallied what you said on the blackboard. And you spent a lot of time to do that, especially reading them, just not even knowing the persons and starting from scratch. There's a number, you know, when I go through it, I know that I put aside, like, I don't even bother reading, because I've seen, I've been there and been, talked and interviewed and seen and know, and you had to go through every one of them. I didn't, because I already knew. So she said she was quite proud of this board, and you can feel good over what you did. You really can. Now, if we had to bring it to closer, this is, this'll go fast now. We start the first round of interviews, then we're going to be down to, you know, a couple probably, and then we have the second round, and then you got to make a decision. Okay. The questions, are there any, you've seen everybody's question. And where there were duplicates, we removed some things around, but you still had your question, one of your three, or two of your three, actually, in the list. Because, for example, the one on budget, two or three of you had that one in, in budget and finance. And so we just kind of moved things around a little bit. But are there any concepts or things that you wanted to ask that you don't think are in this listed, and you'd think burningly they should be?
Anyone? Kim?
Well, I guess it's more of a general question in terms of, how closely are we going to be following this as a script? I mean, are there going to be follow-up questions that we can ask besides what's on paper here?
Yes.
I want to get a better sense.
You notice there are 15 questions, and normally, you can allow in a 49 hour and 15 minutes, you can line up those 17, 18 questions. So, the first question should be, this first round should be the same for everybody in the same order. However, you can do, when we get done, we go through that, we'll have some time for you to do follow-up or any additional questions you want to ask. Now, you can do follow-up based upon the candidate's response. And you may do follow-up because it's a good question, we'll do it for everybody. But if I'd say one particular person follow-up in something he or she did, then that would not be repeated than the next person, if it's not fitting. So the first round is, is general questions with follow-up, and of course, time for them to ask you questions. You have to remember, there's two rounds to this, and you can't do it all in one round. I mean, you can't, you could go all night, you know, talking to some people, and you have to kind of stick to a timeline. However, follow-up can be specific to the candidate based upon what they've said. Did that answer your question? Otherwise, we follow the script.
Yep.
I know in other interview situations I've been in, for example, Teacher of the Year selection, it's sometimes helpful to give the interviewees the number of questions that are coming, which, and then the average time, which would allot to the total amount of time that you have, do suggest that we do that as well.
We'll start, start that way after you make your introductions and so on. We have 15 questions, we have an hour and 15 minutes to do that, and then I'll kind of be the, I won't ring any bells or buzzers or anything, I'll just say, we need to move on a little bit. Because some folks can go on for a long time, others are short. And so, I'll kind of monitor that so that we, and we don't have to end on the minute. So we go over five minutes, doesn't make any, we're all here, they're all here. So it's not a case of rush, rush, rush. All right? But it's not a case of, you know, filibustering either.
Any other questions or comments for Ken on the topics presented by our questions? All right?
Okay. So, if you see something you want to follow up, or something changes between now and then, and we want to add it, that's fluid, that's okay. Or if you want to change your question, remember, it's not how it was sent to you written, it's how you want to ask it for what you want to know. That's important. If you want to change your wording in your question, change it, but just do it for everybody. Or if you want to expand, or if you even want to replace it before now and then, you know, just let us know, so we don't duplicate something. But, it's your question, you're looking for something, some information that you want to know about their performance, or their thoughts, or their philosophy, and so on, that's okay. Okay? Because we get this second round, most of it are going to be your questions. I have some, oh, three or four we're going to do, and the second round we'll do, have an educational presentation with a stand-up and deliver type thing, but, and that'll take about 10, 15 minutes. But, I have a few other questions I think are essential in the second round, but most of it will be from you. And you'll have time, because we'll have another session like this before the second round. It won't take as long as this one, though. I want to just talk a little bit about process. It's a comparative process. Makes extraordinarily important that you listen. This business of interviewing and talk, and looking, vetting people, body language is significant. You know, if you just do this, like, I'm not interested anymore, you're just sending a message. So we're going to be polite, and we're going to listen, and sometimes it's hard. I don't see that in this group, but I've seen in some groups where, boy, you know, it's hard not to put your head down, take a rest in between. So, you got to listen, because it's comparative. The other thing is, hold off on any discussion till you have seen all of the candidates. It's a comparative process. You don't want to get in each other's head, you don't want to, you know, get yourself in concrete, you want to just be open and listen, and open-minded and patient. That's extraordinarily important. Need to focus on the job in the district, and when I say that, you're hiring for long-term. Not many in the, it's not like the St. Paul, Minneapolis, three years and five, you're out. You'll notice, when you get this, you'll see that there are no other superintendents from the Metierver who applied, superintendents who applied. And you saw that when you went through the papers. Because if they're good, and they're doing well where they are, a metropolitan area move is rare. There may be other things, like geography or something, but usually, it's rare. So, you're hiring for, you know, a long period of time. So think about the long haul, think about what's best for the district, what's going to be a good fit, because you know this place like the back of your hands, and think in those terms. Again, you may have to give up some of your own ideas. Might think, well, maybe this might be better, even though I would like this, for the, for the good of the organization. You know what can't be asked, we don't have any questions that you can't ask. Because you can't follow up with something, are you pregnant or anything like that, it doesn't go. And then somebody asked you that, Marge?
Yeah.
Huh? A long time ago?
I interviewed for White Bear.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay.
That was in '71.
Respect. Only one person's going to get the job. And we've had 20, about 30-some inquiries, and 23, I think, completed applications, and there's only, only one person that's going to get it, so I want them to feel, and I had some phone calls from the persons who got the email that they weren't going to interview, want to know why and things of this, they just best they can. Sometimes I don't know why, or I don't want to say why. But I did have some, so, 23 people put everything in, and one's going to get the job. And there's not much sense of talking about what's wrong with anybody, because we're not going there anyhow. Are we? We're going where the side that has the positive thing on it. So, respect, and when they walk out of here, they say, I was treated fairly. Because, there's 22 others that are basically rejected. Some people take it, don't take it easily. Confidentiality, you happen to have a list that, right now, is very confidential. It's not for you, since you're the employee body, employing body, but that's confidential to that board meeting and take the action. Be patient. No Lone Rangers, no running off. You know, be patient, trust each other, work with each other. Step by step, and again, we're going to ultimately need consensus. I think that's going to be the best answer. Let's see, what else do we want to tell you? I told you I've talked, talked with all of them, I've visited four, four of them personally, and I'm feeling, I'm feeling good for where you are. And I hope you're feeling comfortable. In the board meeting, I'm going to talk about process a little bit, I think we'll have a much larger audience than we have here. I'll talk about process and what has transpired since we started this. I want to talk about some of the things that you've had to do, and also want to talk a little bit about my observations, and then Janet will, will propose the candidates. That's about all I have, unless you have questions.
Any questions about process?
You know, with the process, being on the subcommittee with George and Kim, talking about the process and being told that most boards don't take part in that first round, reading the applications, I was wondering, because I found that very, very helpful to me, to be able to read them all, to see the range of skills out there. Do you know, are there any, you know, I'm sure there must be some boards that do that, that take part in that first round.
Well, I've worked with probably 35 boards, someplace in there, and almost in every case, it was either, with my, in some, most, even MSBA, who now, just one or few, they, their applications are sent to the MSBA's office online, and they bring, they bring a list. Most of them do it that way. I don't. I, it's a long time ago I started, because I wanted the board to be involved, and I don't want people to say the consultant picked our superintendent. So I always, because of the open meeting law, I always had at least two or three other board members, for a seven-member board, meet with me, and we go through them and take a morning and spend a whole morning, but they just went through them once, you guys went through them, I don't know how many times. So that's, that's unique. I think that's going to happen more that way.
We will be trailblazers.
No, I just found that it really, I mean, in terms of the first time doing this, it really helped me, looking at all those applications and spending the time reading them.
And I know at least one of our board members-
Some boards don't want to spend that much time, some boards can't either, you know?
Yeah, I understand that.
They just don't have the time to come in and do it, but that's, you're going to know so much about these people by the time you get done. You know, if you're going through all their materials, talking to people, and interviewing them once, and then interviewing them a second time, you're going to know them pretty well.
Any other questions or discussion for Ken? Marge?
This isn't really a question, it's just, as I looked at my question, I will send you something that should be added, because I've got the communication with, and I didn't include the board.
Well, just do that when you ask the question.
Oh, okay.
Just change it, yeah.
All righty.
Just go ahead, change it.
I put all the other stakeholders in.
Yeah, yeah, just change it. You don't need to send me anything.
I'd like the candidates to talk to the board, too.
Remember, it's your question. Like I say, oh, the other thing I wanted to caution you, don't give a speech with your question. Four years ago, we did this, and seven years ago, we did this, and now this happened, and so on. Now, what would you do about that? Just get to the part of what would you do about it. Maybe a little history, but not much.
We want to hear them.
Well, boards like to tell candidates how good their district is, and that process, they forgot about the question. So, you can do that, you have plenty of time to do that. I just remember that, sometimes, the question's so long, the candidate looks like, what was, say that again, what's the question? You know? So, you keep it short, that's good.
Any other questions or comments or discussion for Ken?
Yeah, Ellen? I just had a question, because some of them are like two-part or three-part questions.
Yeah.
Does a candidate, when they come in, do they have a typed-
No.
-set in front of them to refer to?
No.
Or they just, okay.
We talked about that. And, because some places will hand them the questions to look ahead. The problem I see is that, you know, the first question, and then they're kind of looking, what's next? No. And it kind of destroys spontaneity, and I'd rather have them just focus on your question, even if I have to ask it a couple times, or, you know, might say, now, what was the second part of that, or, I missed this, or I missed that. But we don't do that. And, by the way, you can write on these, write anything you want on here, make notes. You'll find when you get the book on Friday, that in the back, there's a sheet, about 10 or 12, like, what do you think about, is a person concise, express him herself well, did he appear to be knowledgeable about whatever, you know? And you can use that as notes for again.
I wonder if it would help, not giving the candidates the questions, but allowing them to each have a pencil and a notepad?
Well, yes, yes, yeah.
Especially with the multi-part questions, they can quick make notes.
Almost everybody will have something, notepad, and they'll probably put down the key concept, and maybe not the whole question, but focus on what you're trying to do.
And Jody, can we, and Linda, can we note that, that we should have notepads and either pens or pencils for each of the candidates?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good idea, yeah. And, by the way, they're going to be seated, not standing.
Much more comfortable.
Yeah, well, plus the fact you can write.
Great rest.
Yeah. And the idea of being, hopefully, kind of a horseshoe with them in the middle, so that you can't put your backs to the audience, and you can't put the candidates' back to the audience, so we're going to be sideways as best we can on the stage.
I think Jody and I are going to be looking with our lighting and tech people at the Mariner Theater tomorrow for a potential layout that should work well.
Okay, all right, all right. And then, talk to Jody, and she's going to be kind of our green room person to meet the candidates and get them situated, because everything's not going to happen instantaneously, you know, perfectly. So they have a place to go and to wait, and have a water or something. And she'll meet them and get them settled.
Very good.
And as far as candidates seeing each other and so on, they all know each other, they all know they're in competition. That's not a big issue. Some people usher one out this door, and the other in this, that's a lot of baloney. Actually, if I got three, say, in the night, and doing a couple of things, I'd just put them in the same room, doesn't make any difference.
Yeah, please, yeah, go ahead, Ellen.
This is just for my clarification, because I've been in interviews and on interview panels where follow-up questions were asked right after that question, or at the end, if you have a, you know, a designated time. So what, is there a general protocol?
Sometimes it can wait, and sometimes it can't.
Okay.
So I'm going to leave that kind of up to you, but I don't want to follow up after follow-up, everybody asks two, three questions. You know, if, there needs to be a follow-up in your mind, the person that's asking the question, then do it then. And I like to follow up with that. And sometimes, somebody else may want to follow up on your question. That's okay, too.
My only concern is, we do want to hear answers to all 15 questions from all five candidates.
Yeah, and we'll do that, we'll do that.
And if we have too many follow-up questions, we may have some-
Because we're going to have time at the end, and we're going to make time at the end for the person, for the follow-up, and for the person to ask questions, and then I'll watch the time. But sometimes, it's very appropriate at that, that moment, because it fits. Yes, George?
Yeah, not to prolong that, but, I mean, should you limit it, or do you suggest limiting it to the person who asked the question to follow up, or you just kind of play it as it comes?
I'd like to play it as it comes, okay? And the reason for that is, you know what time, when we're doing on time, and you know that you can save it to the end or not, I mean, well, I won't sit, you know, I would prefer just that the person who asked it do the follow-up, but if it's burning and it's important to you, ask it. Yes?
George, go ahead.
And I had three, I think. Second, will you have water for them at the table during the interview?
Yes.
And then, number three, I was going to suggest that they not get a pad. You know, I think it's nice to give them a pad, but if someone comes here without the ability, something to take notes on, then I'm, they're off my list right away. I'm kind of interested to see if they come prepared or not.
Oh, my gosh, they gave the presidential candidates in the presidential debates pads and pens, so.
Wow, jeez.
I think we could provide it just in case.
Well, some people don't need pads and pens, they'll just listen to the question, and they're good at that, and, you know?
Yeah.
But that'll work itself, that'll play, they'll be fine.
And George, should you have a third question, or?
The water.
Oh, the water, all right.
I'm good.
Well, everybody will have water. Do you have to pay for water?
I think any meal or beverages in connection with the interview process would be district borne.
Good, okay, all right, that's good.
District expense. Any other, yeah, Kim?
Let's see now. Yeah.
Just to lead off, or just to rehash, I guess, you're going to be the moderator, basically. I mean, it's not going to be Janet, correct? I mean, who's running the meeting, basically?
If there needs to be, let's move on type thing.
Yeah, but you're going to be the one that's moderating, or whatever.
Yeah, yeah. Because if I say, you're running out of time here, got to move it along a little bit, I'll do it very politely. There's no need for anybody here to do that. And I'll sit through all the interviews.
And how many questions are you going to be asking upfront? Did you say?
How many questions, what?
How many questions are you going to be asking? It sounded like you had some, if I heard right, or did I?
No, 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 that's for the second round.
That's in the second round?
Second round, I'll give you some, I suggest, it'd be three or four, after the presentation, and then we're going to go to you. And each of you will have two, at least. And that's candidate-specific now. We've gone through the, everybody's same questions. You've now heard them talk, and you now know where they're from, you now know what, in their papers, what they've done. Your questions can be more candidate-specific. And you don't have to ask everybody the same one. And we'll talk about that a little bit more, we're just going to have a short session prior to. And I'll send you something through email, through Jody, that you can respond to. Yes?
I just want to alert you, I've rewritten a portion of one of my questions, so I just make sure Jody gets it changed.
Fine, that's fine, yeah. That's okay. Just so it doesn't conflict with somebody else's, or repeat somebody else's, that's perfectly fine.
I did it so it didn't repeat someone else's.
Okay, okay.
Now, Kim?
Do you have, with regard to rewrites of questions, do you have a deadline that you want these in by? I mean, obviously, not right at the moment we're walking into the room, but you want to, for example, these questions, you know, a week almost, or six days in advance?
Yeah.
I mean, is there any, you know, drop-dead date, so to speak, or time that you want these by?
Twenty-second.
The twenty, oh, okay.
Because you were going to bring, if you're going to do it, unless, you send it to me, and I say, "No, no, you can't do that." You know, or, "I don't know what you're asking here, I don't even understand the question." I might do that with you on the phone, but just send it to me beforehand, so I can see it, yeah, if you change it, yeah.
So, are-
Minor change, nothing, but if you change a whole question, and it's different from what you had here, then kind of let me know.
But are they going to be shared with the board, so we, I mean, if there is a complete rewrite of a question?
If it's appropriate, I will, yeah.
A complete rewrite, so we can just have straight in our hand?
And perhaps it makes sense to get our edits in by next Tuesday.
We change something dramatically, we'll email it to everybody.
Maybe by next Tuesday, then, the district's closed on Monday, because of President's Day. But if we get our edits into Jody and/or Linda, Jody is pointing to herself, into Jody on Tuesday.
I think most of you feel pretty comfortable what you've selected, at least in concept. And remember, we're looking at concepts, your wording sometimes is different for different people with the same concept. But I don't want to expect some many changes, major changes. I really don't. That's hard work, writing good questions.
Anything else for Ken? He will be back at our regular board meeting tonight. We specifically asked him to, for the people who are attending or listening in, to explain the process that we've gone through from the very beginning until this point in the superintendent selection process. And then he will turn it over to me, and I will put the names of the five candidates in a resolution, or a motion that we accept those and move them on to first interviews.
And I will call after tonight's meeting, after, when you finish, I will call the persons and let them know what action you've taken, and also let them know their schedule, so they can plan accordingly. Because I've already, I have a draft of a schedule for those two days. And Linda and I have been ready to go soon, by Friday, you'll have it, everything.
Anything else?
Pass them down, or?
You can hold on to them, just hide them, put them down in your shirt or something. But that's going to, everything is embargoed until our seven o'clock meeting. And the questions won't be shown to anybody in advance. But you also have a list of the five candidates, so that should not be shown to anybody until they're distributed publicly at our seven o'clock meeting.
That's yours.
Well, Ken, I want to publicly thank you for all of the work you've done. You have been a pleasure to work with, you've been clear, you've been very helpful. It's been a delight, we really appreciate the expertise that you've provided to us during this process.
Good. And if you have any questions, if you have anything come up, just call, just call or email.
We've got your number.
Yep, yep, we'll work it out. And I do want to explain to the public, at your public meeting, the role that you have played to this point, and the role you've played yet, yet to play. It's going to go much faster now, you know? Yes?
One thing I want to say is, it was very useful, as everyone has said, to read all of them carefully, sometimes two or three times. And I also found the questions helpful. But I want to make sure that when you talk to the larger group at the regular board meeting, that the public realize how big a part they played. Those two listening days that we did, and listened to all the stakeholders, were priceless. And they were always in our minds, those questions, as we're looking at everyone.
And to emphasize that, a summary of what we all heard, for those of us who were there on those two days. A summary has been provided to the full board. So, we, even if we were not able to attend those two days of listening sessions, we know what the teachers, the paras, the principals, the cabinet, what everybody said about what they wanted to see.
People took their time before work, after work, during work.
Absolutely.